Four minutes for people to show up.
Okay.
So right now we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Dan's not coming, so it would just be to see if Mr. Bergeron is going to be here.
Sounds good.
It might be a good time to mention, I noticed on the city website that there are three vacancies for the planning board, so I'm guessing a few people's terms have expired. I don't know if people are reapplying or what, but.
Yeah, we have, I think we have three expirations and we have five applications and we have one vacancy, so.
Who's the, who's the third? Because I know it was myself and Dan, but.
Well, I think it's the one that's, it's still from, what, Brian and Katie making to council, it's just hasn't been filled yet. Like it's probably my position because I was associate and I think it's still an associate that's being filled.
Yeah, Evan, you're right. It's yours and Dan's are expiring this past January. The other one is just a vacancy. We have, we either have four or five applications though.
It's the associate, there's a missing associate. Alright, so Megan, I think we can hit broadcast now. Great, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 9th, 2021 planning board meeting, or meeting of the Auburn Planning Board. Like to begin this meeting with a roll call.
Evan Seer.
Thank you.
Dana Staples.
Thank you.
Stephen Martelli.
Casey LeBlanc.
Mr. Finnegan. Mr. Bergeron.
Present.
And I'm Chairman DeValle. Mr. Finnegan, can you try again? You, I couldn't hear you. Yeah.
No, he's not muted, though.
You're not muted, your sound is not working. Maybe you need to check your settings. Alright, so, modern day Zoom meetings, while we wait for that, I would ask for consent from the board to elevate Mr. Bergeron to full Planning Board member status, as we have six regular members present and use associate.
I agree.
I agree.
Mr. Bergeron, you will be acting as a regular Planning Board member for this meeting, which means you can make motions and vote. First item is, or second item after roll call is the approval of the minutes from the January 12th meeting.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any comments? Amendments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
That's unanimous, thank you. That motion carries seven, zero. I would also like, as just at the start, to get incentive the board to move item number three, the election of the chair and the vice chair, to after the public comment period, so after item 10 on the current agenda.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Which brings us to item four. And that's feedback on the five-year capital improvement plan. So the city manager has asked for any planning board feedback by March 1st. This is an opportunity for us to discuss anything after having looked through the materials we got last month. So if anybody has issues they'd like to bring forward now, please do.
I have no issues. I think this was, was pretty good, actually. It's improved over the years, I would say. Some of the, some of the monies were sort of earmarked for possible development, being able to grant, write grants, so on and so forth, to move forward with future possible land use changes or development. And I know that we are coming up on drafting from the Comprehensive Plan Committee, I'm assuming, sometime this year, so I guess the only thing I was thinking might be a nice suggestion would be to ask the manager to place wherever he felt was appropriate verbiage to kind of outline that perhaps some of those funds could be used for some of the work that would be needed to implement the, the, the advice or the the advice, but the recommendations of the the call planning committee if those are adopted by the council.
Great, thank you. I like that suggestion. I also agree that the process and the materials that we've gotten are improved over the previous year, so I would just appreciate that as well. Any other thoughts or comments from the board?
One thing that I saw that, I don't know that there needs to be a line item for this, but I didn't see anything for like a COVID plan, you know, any kind of money that would be to, I don't know, recover from COVID. I don't know that there is something that we need, but it just seemed like something that I would have expected to see in there. So I guess we don't really know what that is, but it seems like something that could go into the CIP.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, well, so as I stated earlier, we have until March 1st to get feedback to the city manager, so I think sending something, if you have comments that, or something hits you, to either Mr. Cousins or Ms. Norwood, I think, would be great. So thank you. Moving on, we have our first public hearing of the evening. This is a zoning map amendment, a proposed rezoning of a portion of the following parcels on Trap Road, PID 057003, 057003-001, 057-002, and 057-001, from Rural Residential to Agricultural Resource Protection pursuant Chapter 60, Article 17 Amendments of the City of Auburn Ordinances. We'll start with our staff report.
So the owners at 285 Trap Road have invested a significant amount of time and capital into a marijuana cultivation business, and this was before we passed our marijuana ordinances. The property owners have done everything that's required by ordinance at the time of construction, but when the new ordinances were passed in 2019, it made the structure non-conforming in the front residential portion of the parcel, which is marijuana obviously is not permitted. The back of the parcel is in the ag zone. So as far as we know, the facility has been operated professionally. We don't know of any violations or known impacts to a butters, and the property owner has since applied for permits to construct another building to connect to the electrical and plumbing infrastructure. That was part of a phased approach to his project with additional buildings that were planned. We obviously had to deny the permit because the zoning, because of the change in zoning to the rural residential, not allowing marijuana businesses. But we've tried to work with the property owner to talk about some options. Ledge and some other site constraints limit their ability to move the proposed building back entirely into the ag zone. So one suggestion that we had was to adjust the boundary of the ag and rural residential zone, which would make the building fit entirely within the ag zone. It's a pretty minor zone change, and it would help to permit the, the growth of this, this business that's permitted in the ag zone. And the city council workedshopped it at their December 7th meeting and requested the planning board make a recommendation on the proposed change, so it's before you to make a recommendation tonight.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Wow. Are there any questions from the board for staff?
Yes.
Mr. Martelli.
Megan, I've got several questions. First off, was this owner in front of the planning board before we made the change?
Um, do you know Eric, if they came? I don't think they had to, but.
No, for the original approval, they didn't have to. And I don't, I don't recall him participating in the ordinance adoption process either.
What, what was the date that he got confirmation on the okay to build this building?
I'd have to check the permitting file. I can do that while you guys continue your discussion.
Alright, and then I, I don't really have any problem with this gentleman having a, a second or even a third or fourth building on the property. What I would suggest that this gentleman do is to go to a engineer or architect and get a complete site plan for any future building, so we can get this okayed all at one time.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I, I wonder, you know, moving to the ag zone is a pretty big change. Were the other landowners consulted with this and have they, have they agreed to this zoning change?
They were notified, they were sent letters, and I believe Eric and I have spoke to two of them. And they didn't specifically say that they were okay or not okay, they were just curious about what, what was going on with it. So they, there may be some of them here tonight, I can't see the attendees list for some reason, but we did speak to a couple of them and they all received notices.
I would be specifically concerned about parcel ID 057-002, which is a 2.3 acre house lot. To make that conform to the ag zone, you know, they would need quite a few more acres to be able to fit into that zone to be a conforming lot. I wonder if the petitioner would, would be open to a land swap so that this person would have a conforming lot.
So just staff, can you clarify that, that it would only be part of that lot that actually flipped to ag zone? And that the area currently has the buildings on that lot is actually not ag zone?
Yeah, that's correct. It's just the rear portion of that lot that would be pulled into the ag zone. 323 Trap Road.
So it doesn't affect this person's ability to have their dwelling on their property?
Right, the rear portion of the property, obviously it would, but I'm, I'm guessing that they probably have the same constraints with the ledge and everything that the other property owners have in that area.
Okay, Mr. Martelli?
Yes. Megan, do you have a, a total acreage that this gentleman owns? Because my information says that he owns 19 acres right there.
One second, I'm just pulling it up.
Alright.
It looks like the part, the total parcel at 285 Trap Road is 66.8 acres.
Right.
I can share this.
Steve, it looks like March of 2018 is when he started construction on the marijuana building.
Alright, very good, thank you. That's long before several of us have been on, on the planning board, so.
Other questions for staff?
Oh, yeah, so when we look at the, the, the zone change itself, what's the, what's the exact purpose of the zone change? How, how was, how was that qualified?
It's a request from the property owner with support from city councilors to change the zone from rural residential to ag to help support the growth of the business. That's the premise behind it.
Okay, so I, and so I guess my question would be, how many possible other parcels are there where an individual could come and say, and ask for us to amend the zoning at the rear of one of these road strips in order to help facilitate their business?
Yeah, we get requests like that all the time, and we tell them to talk to their local councilors and see if it's something that may be able to be brought forward. So in this case, the reason that we have to include the four different parcels is so that we can't just spot zone this one parcel and leave the rest in rural residential and do like a leapfrog. So that's why it's, it's encompassing a larger area, and it would be the same case for other property owners as well.
Okay, so it's, it's, there are requests like this that happen a lot, you're saying, though?
We get a lot of people inquiring about rezoning their, their specific properties and we walk them through the process of what that would look like. It would, it would be exactly the same situation.
It's, it's not all that common that somebody wants to go from residential to ag, usually it's the other way, but we, we feel those requests to change zoning regularly.
And so the difference with this one was that they were essentially more active in self advocating with their, with their councilors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That and their, their large investment in infrastructure to support other buildings and their, their proximity to sort of the end of the residential line, I think are the only things that really make it a little different.
And what, what, what precludes the individual from being able to build? How much farther back would they have to move? Because I assume that, you know, they came with, asking for permits, so they have a projected sort of building layout and, and building envelope. How far back would it have to be moved in order to maintain the current boundaries?
You mean the, the zoning?
How far, how far back would the building have to be moved in order to conform to the current, to the current zone?
I don't have the exact measurements, I just know they, they told us it's, it's physically not possible because of the site constraints. We could request a, a letter from an engineer confirming that it would be X amount of dollars to be able to put them in the ag zone to make that more concrete, but that's what we've, we've heard from them, that it's not feasible.
Megan, the, the proposed building was about 40 feet behind the existing building that you can see in the area. So if you wanted to measure, I think you could get a ballpark for how much further.
It was 40 feet from this building, you said?
Yes, yeah.
While you're doing that, if the site presents a constraint, was, was the possibility of, of a variance discussion brought up at all?
We, we did bring that up on site with Counselor Walker and Counselor Carrier and the property owner. Our ordinance really does not allow for a use variance, it's explicit that it can only be a dimensional variance, a setback, or some other dimensional standard.
Okay, for some reason I thought if, there was a, like a supplemental use or something description.
Shouldn't this be grandfathered because he was building the building and got the okay before we made the change?
Well, as I understand it, it's not, the current building is in use, the current building is fine to use, it's, he wants to build a new building. But no, that doesn't currently exist.
Right, and I believe it's, it's underway already, the utilities and stuff, and they obviously can't get their certificate of occupancy and we can't issue the permits to continue with it, even though the infrastructure is already there.
Okay, well, I will say to the, to the rest of the board, whenever we've had something come up where someone's sort of gone ahead, it's, we've always been cautioned by staff to treat it as though nothing has happened yet. That, not really part of our decision-making whether or not they've built something and now they would like it to be conforming, it's whether or not.
Yeah, but he came, he came to the, he came to Eric or, or one of the planning people to get the okay and he got an okay somewhere.
So he got, back in 2018, he got an okay to build the building that you see there in the image on site. He then came in late 2020, after the marijuana standards had been passed by the council and in place, and applied for a permit to build an additional building. Ideally, he'd like to build three more buildings. And he has already built the electrical infrastructure into the existing building to support two to three more buildings. He has not started construction of the second building, although he has done a little bit of the site work and grading for it.
Would his additional buildings be in the current ag zone?
No, then the rea, the reason that he's given us is, if you look at the site and it's, it's really evident when you're out there, by the time you get to the, into the ag zone, there's just a lot of ledge outcroppings and no soil left to work on the, on the surface. So he's unable to put his utilities underground in that area as he moves back into the ag zone without blasting in a lot of expense.
Any other questions for staff? Go ahead.
Oh, I, I guess I just have one more, just to make sure we understand, and so that I understand. The building that he built in 2018 is currently operational, legally operational, he's allowed to do what he's doing there because it was built prior to the adoption of the current ordinance, so he's a legally non-conforming use and he can continue doing that. And that the request really stems from the desire to build additional buildings? Yes, no, okay.
And I suggest that he go to an architect or engineer and get a, a drawing for any site plan for all the buildings that he wants to build right now, so that we can iron this out once and for all. So he can move forward.
If he was proposing them in the agricultural zone, he wouldn't have to come to this board for those buildings.
And he's only a few feet away.
Can, can you measure Megan from the building to the zoning boundary?
Yeah, sorry. About 200 feet.
And how big of a building is he gonna put in?
Six to 10,000 square foot buildings. At least one, and potentially two more after that.
So you're looking at 60 to by 100? Roughly?
Yep, yeah, the one that's there is 70 by 100.
Alright.
The next one's slightly smaller and the other two could be slightly bigger than, than that.
I have no problem with this. We need to give him a variance on this and, and let this gentleman move forward.
So are there any more questions for the board? If not, we will open, I'd like to open public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public input section of the hearing?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public who wish to address the board on, about this issue to raise their hand. You will be brought into the, you, it will, you will be allowed to, your audio to be turned on and you can address the board. Thank you. So I see no hands raised?
Motion to close the public input section, public hearing.
We have a motion closed. We have a second. All in favor? Thank you. At this point, we can discuss, members of the planning board can discuss how they feel and have their, express their thoughts on this process, on this project.
Well, to start off, I, I have no problem with this. The gentleman, from what I understand, wants to build a second, third, or fourth building on this property. He's got ledge, he's only got so much room to work with. That's tax money that the city is losing out on for the buildings, and it's only a few feet that we're looking at on property, and he's got 60 acres there. So why not help the guy out?
Thank you. Are there members of the board?
Yeah, when I, when I, oh, go for it, Riley.
I, I also don't see an issue with it, because it would feel more like spot zoning if this particular thing wasn't at the very tail end of the residential, like if it was surrounded by more residential, it would seem like we were spot zoning, but this being at the very end of that strip of zoning, I don't see that this is a big deal at all.
When I was looking at this, I, I sort of removed the entirety of the like to, to, I guess when I looked at this, I thought it was sort of superfluous whether or not, how much someone had invested in the properly, in the property, so on and so forth, because we're really looking at land use laws, and when I was looking at this, I was thinking about what the implications of something like this are. Because when we make decisions like this, this is a very small area. However, we, we need to remember that we are not a political board, so when we decide that something like this is okay, we kind of move into a situation where we're deciding that something like this is okay, that's what we choose, that's, that's absolutely fine, I just think it's important everyone understands that. And I guess, I, I was almost thinking that this, this problem is, is a, is a bigger problem with the marijuana ordinance, in that marijuana is treated as a, an agricultural crop in the ag zone, but it's not treated as an agricultural crop in any other zone. And it occurred to me that in a zone like this, these, these strip zones, these are all backed by agricultural land. And you don't find these rural residential zones or the the, the low-density rural residential, the low-density country residential in the middle of urban zones, they're always backed by the ag zones, and to me, it seemed to be a bigger problem with the way we treat an agricultural product and how we carve it out. And how we carve it out, a sort of its own special thing. Um, I think that if we do this, uh, for this gentleman, there's, to, to me, I, I would want to move forward and say what we really need to look at. As whether or not anyone in one of these zones that's backed by the ag zone ought to be able to take advantage of the ability to, to. Grow what we've defined as an agricultural crop. Um, so I don't necessarily have an issue with this project or what this gentleman is trying to do. Um, I worry that it's a limited solution and then it might open a Pandora's box and then it doesn't really solve the, the bigger issue.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts from the board?
So I'll admit, when I was reading through this. When I was reading through this agenda packet, I, I misinterpreted the map that was provided here. So I assumed that the entire lot would be. Changed to ags, uh, the agricultural zone and not just the shaded area. So, having, having said that, I guess it changes my, my thought process that I, from what I said earlier, I don't, you know, I think. What I said earlier didn't really make a lot of sense. But now I do have a new question. Um, so if, if the property of zero five seven zero zero three dash zero zero one. Is the, the property where? The, the gentleman is trying to build, why are we including zero five seven dash zero zero three in this agenda item?
Um, so zero zero, uh, wait, hold on. Sorry, my eyeballs here. Um, zero five seven dash zero zero three is two eighty-five trap road. That's the one, um, that they're proposing the buildings on. And then their parcels are looped in. Sorry, go ahead.
They've only recently created that new property line in the middle separating, uh, three oh seven and two eighty-five.
Right, yeah, when I went on to the GIS, um, that line wasn't, wasn't on the map that I was looking at at least. Okay.
Yeah, I apologize, um, a legend probably would have helped with this map, so, sorry about that.
All makes sense now, it's fine.
Other thoughts from the board? Ms. LeBlanc, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, so Evan, if you're trying to say it's like setting precedence, I, I agree with you. So if you do it once, you're setting up precedent to do it in the future. Is, was that your comment basically?
Yeah, it, it, it puts us in a tough spot when someone else comes to say, uh, well, you know, I really had planned on doing this. On my property, uh, it's, now it's economically prohibitive to me, for me to be able to push this all the way back to the ag zone. Um, I'm pretty close to the end of my strip. I'd really like you to consider, uh. Narrowing that, 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 that rural residential strip along my, my road to include my neighbors up to the end of the strip, so. Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Finnegan? We still can't hear you. If you can type it in the chat, I can read it and to the record.
As I was, I'm looking at the. The, so it's because it's between. I, I guess my point with it being at the very end of the strip was that it, it was, it seems more. Conforming of a use than if it were to be just any, anywhere along the strip and having it narrowed on these other, uh, strips that go out into agricultural zones. I guess that my point was that because it's at the very end of it, it doesn't seem like it's as much of a precedent setting issue as it would be.
Yeah, no, I guess.
I guess the language, I guess the language would matter, but because there's, there's, most of this are like a long strips of. Road and then on the backside of the properties are agricultural. But when it's kind of like the dead end of the strip, if you will, uh, I don't, I guess I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bergeron, and I, I think you're right. It doesn't sort of set a precedent for doing it in the middle of a strip. Uh, well, then it sort of raises the question, you know, if maybe, uh. So he, so this property looks like, I don't have a scale, but based on the size of that property, it's gonna be, I don't know. From the start of his property, I mean, it's gotta be over a thousand feet to the end, well, well over a thousand. So, you know, what if someone was? You know, two thousand feet from the end and they convinced all their neighbors like, hey, yeah, you know, like, let's just push your back. So, uh, the, the back line. But that could happen and you're right. I think it, it, it really only creates a situation where we're looking at the end of these strips, but there are a lot of. These ends, right, so.
So I want to read in, um, Mr. Finnegan's comment. He says. I agree with Evan. Megan mentioned these requests come in often. I would think these would be looked at at a case by case basis. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The planning board would have to review any zoning amendment that comes before, um, staff and city council.
Okay, great, thanks. So I guess for, for, I'll just chime in my thoughts here on this because, um, like Evan, I, I'm concerned with. Like Evan and Mrs. LeBlanc or Mr. Seer and Mrs. LeBlanc, I'm concerned about the precedent. That this could be setting and concerned about these sorts of things coming before the board again and again and again. Um. That this person happened to be able to be noticed by two council members. Um. Brings up questions about, potential questions about access. So who has the access to? Collected officials to be able to get their attention to move this sort of thing forward. Like Mr. Seer, I would favor a, an approach that. Creates a citywide solution that people are comfortable with so that we don't have to continue to. Address these things and so that we are not actually. Um. Making a small change for a specific landowner. Um. I think Mr. Seer very, uh, wisely points to the differential way we treat an agricultural crop, marijuana. Um, across different zones and that's, um, my understanding, this would be a question for staff, is that true for any other? Type of crop?
I think every other type of crop would have been allowed in the residential zone.
As much as I want, right?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so, tho- those are my thoughts. Mr. Bergeron?
Uh, I got, back to the setting precedent thing, the part of this consideration is that he was, he built this. When it wasn't, uh, against the zoning to have that crop. And so, but this, this, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of cases like this in these residential strip zones where someone had already previously built. Marijuana build was allowed to do it and now because they built the, the electrical infrastructure and that he, like, I agree that because he did that before. Something, something we should consider, but because he built before and had been permitted to operate a, a business in this particular spot. I don't, I, I don't see it setting, I don't, I don't see, uh, unless there's a lot of other grows at the very end of. Residential zones that border the edge, edge of agricultural zones. I don't see how much of a precedent this sets.
Mr. Seer?
Um, y- yeah, I guess. Um. Maybe I'm confused as to the point, but he's not prohibited from using his current building. Like, we're not doing this so that he can have the grow operation that he already invested in. He already has that. It's operational. He's making money on that. This is about expanding and building additional buildings, so.
How much precedent would that set?
Well, what if I came to you and said I'd been saving for ten years and I planned on. Building, uh, th- this building in my backyard, but now I, I, I can't do it because of the zone.
But you hadn't already built one that was already against the zone. Like, this zone came into this zoning, the, the plant, the effect of the marijuana crop came into effect after you'd already built it. Wait, I don't know that maybe, maybe you wouldn't have built it in the first place if it was against the zone.
It wa- right, so when he built his first building, absolutely, right? Um, but this is really about, th- this isn't about saying, well, you know, I told you guys I was gonna build more and then you changed the rule on me. This is, um, saying, well, you know, I have one, but because I have. In, in part it's saying because I have one, I should be able to have more. When I look at it, I say fundamentally, that's not really the argument that's being made. The argument that's being made is. I would like to put. Some buildings on my property that I, that I can't put on my property. And it's sort of, doesn't really matter what's. Already there. Someone had, if someone had plans to do something. Um, they had plans to do something. And this is an, absolutely an unfortunate situation. Uh, but I, I think it's, that's possibly a wider precedent than just marijuana. Uh, growers who already have a single building. I think it, it, it really winds it up because of the, 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 the intent that was described behind. The, the, the zone change, it really opens it up more to, um. To really saying, well, uh, anyone whose intention is to, um, do something, but now they can't. Even though they have invested in some way, uh, well, then they ought to be able to as well. If, if we're gonna do that here.
So Evan, can I, can I ask you a question? So he, so I, I'm, I'm trying to follow this too. So he had his facility that he had developed. Under, you know, the regular parameters of giving approval. And then he decided to, to build or start to build another building. Should he have come to the board prior to building this second one? Or was he building it under the, the guise of? He thought it was, it was approved because of the prior approval. I'm not sure if I'm making any sense, but.
I don't know what his thought process was. He would not, he didn't, he wouldn't have had to come to the board at all anyway.
Okay.
Uh, so, and this goes back to the, the way we treat an agricultural crop, uh, crop, right? So prior to our two thousand nineteen, uh, updated marijuana ordinance. Marijuana was treated as an agricultural crop period, which meant it wasn't a big deal for him to go and build this thing in the rural residential zone. Because it was an agricultural building, right? Like, he was, he was building an indoor grow house. That's clearly an agricultural use. And agricultural uses that are allowed in the ag zone are also allowed in the rural residential zone. So it wasn't a big deal. Where it became a big deal is that we, uh, and quite frankly, I didn't catch it at the time and I, I was part of that. Uh, chose to treat marijuana differently all of a sudden. So anyone who was previously acting. As though it was an agricultural crop, kind of got left out in the lurch because now it wasn't being treated like every other cul- agricultural crop. Does that make sense?
I guess that's, but I guess that's kind of my thing about intent, though. You, you were saying if someone might intend to do something, they actually have already. Built, uh, uh, you know, they already are in operation. I think the only precedent I think would be setting is someone who in the. In, in the residential zone is already operating and wanted to expand to the agricultural zone. I just don't see that being as, as precedent setting as. Because if it was someone to say I intend, like, I agree if someone said, well, I meant to do this or I was planning on doing this, uh, he, he had already been operating. Um, on that, in that residential zone, if we're treating it differently than. He's grandfathered in as current use, but I don't, I don't see the, the problem with expanding it. On the same property.
Except that what we are not doing is changing the location of that building to agricultural zone. That building that exists is still gonna be non-conforming in, what is it, low density rural residential? I, I don't know what zone it is.
Yes.
Um. So the waiver is not about the, the property that already exists, right? This, this, this has no. It has nothing to do with what already exists. It has to do with the rules that we created as a, as a community. Around the governance of marijuana and somebody's desire to expand their business. But those rules now prohibit them from doing that, just as they would prohibit me from doing that. Here in my. In, on, in my yard.
But I, again, I agree with Mr. Bergeron where this is grandfathered in. He, he started, uh, in two thousand eighteen. Before we set the rules that we should, you know, abide by that rather than, uh. The new, uh, setting that we have.
That, so my question is then, why do we have, uh, zones or change them at all, if that's the case?
What I'm saying is that he got the blessing from the city in two thousand eighteen to, to build the buildings. And we should, uh, you know, honor that.
So how much carp launch did they have to honor, do we, does he have, then, under the two thousand and eighteen?
From what I understand, he wanted to build four buildings total.
Yeah, he, he only submitted applications for the single building, but he built out the. Electrical plumbing and water infrastructure to support additional capacity.
Had, had he sought the permits at that time and say done the ground pads or something like that, would that have, uh? Would that sort of taken care of this issue? Would it, at, at that point, would we really be talking about what, what Mr. Martelli is talking about where he's really already started? And?
If he had started, yeah, we would have worked with him until he completed it. If the approval happened, when we were able to approve it.
Mr. Staples?
I'm just thinking that the, the city changed their mind on, on how they wanted marijuana to be done. And so when he st- when he built his building in two thousand eighteen. They had one mindset, they changed their mind. And it's. You know, Mr. Seer said it before, we're not a political board. We need to abide by the rules and interpret the rules and not necessarily be. On one side or another about an issue. Um, I think in general, I'm not a huge fan of having split zones and, and on one lot. I think that, I, I'm not sure what purpose that serves, um, besides having us have meetings like this, you know? Um, but. Having said that, I think in this case, I'm, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Yeah, so let me say that. Uh, I'm sure people have gotten the impression that I am, I am dead set against this. That's not necessarily the case. I guess I'm looking at this as an opportunity to say that, uh, should we move forward with this? That this is clearly not where this discussion should end. And that this is perhaps a wake-up call for us to say, next month, we need to begin looking at whether or not. Uh, because that, we are not a political board, but we are charged with looking at land use. And if we find an incongruence in land use. Uh. Um, and, and in ordinances, then it's definitely within our purview to say, to go to the city council and say, hey. We're seeing this, this doesn't make sense. This is how we propose it should be. Um, resolved. And then they're the political board that decides whether or not they think that's right for the community, but. Uh, I guess. Yeah.
So hypothetically, then, another way, rather than approve this and go back and do that, we could go back and do that.
We could. I mean, I guess it becomes a timeline issue. That's, it just changes timelines.
Yep.
And this, this proposal is not time sensitive. Um, it's something that, uh, the councilors put forward for their. For the property owner, he won't start work on this until at least this spring when the grounds start. If he even continues to pursue it. It's, uh, it was one of those for staff anyways, that the, you know, the existing situation doesn't sit well. Um, because he had already invested in the infrastructure and we were able to approve it, but the solution has its concerns too. So I can, I definitely can hear, hear both sides.
Part of the solution would be that, that original building would still be not, uh, not zoned properly, right, to grow marijuana?
Correct, yeah, it would be grandfathered.
But a real solution could actually make that conforming, an accepted use.
Yeah, if marijuana was treated like other agricultural crops.
Because at this point, if it's non-conforming and let's say there's damage to that. He can't rebuild it for that use, is that correct?
If it's. Let's see, I don't know. And now we'll have to double check. I don't. Do you remember if that's a sixty five percent standard for that, Megan?
Yeah, sixty five um for natural damages or, you know, like weather events or something like that. And then fifty for. Um if he damaged it himself to reconstruct a portion of it.
So if there were a fire. He he wouldn't be able to utilize that building. Right now, he's making income from that building. Uh by producing marijuana, but if there were to be a fire in that building. That'd be that that required more than sixty percent rebuild, then. Be done.
That is a possibility. It's a concrete building, though, so you know, it would take a pretty substantial fire to do that. But it's certainly a possibility.
Um. But and I guess as I look at this map, I look and I say. Why not his neighbors across the road? Why would we not afford them the same equitable option to? If 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 the entire if we're hearing that the entire neighborhood is the 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 uh topography is ledge. At this point, you know, the neighbors across the road are still bound to that to this to the same depth before they get to the ag zone. The neighbor at two forty three Trap Road is. One parcel over, right? We're we're not affording them the same. Uh equitable option to be able to do this. I I guess. I don't like the solution. Um, I I I I have absolutely no problem with what he's trying to do. I think that that sort of agricultural use fits. Um, I think it's a good agricultural use for lands that can't be used for any other sorts of agriculture. I mean. It it's if if it's fundamentally agriculture out there, a agricultural land, right? And that's what we've deemed it. Um, and this is the best agricultural use. And this is the best agricultural use, but I think it should sort of be afforded to. Everyone who's who's out there, you know, I mean, I look at this and I say it it says the precedent, a a precedent in my mind, which which is concerning, but it also sort of. The 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 bigger precedent that it sets is that we just kind of sort of chose who got to win on this one, like, oh, your neighbor. On the other side, they don't. They don't get to win, like they will not have this option. Um, but you do, and I would prefer a solution that is. Cleaner, more universal and 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 is more equitable in the way we treat agricultural crop. Not to say that I think we should. Not recommend this, not saying that we should recommend this regardless of what happens. I think that that that's a discussion we need to have.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this? Okay, so to move forward, I would need a motion of some kind. Mr. Seer?
Well, be- before I make a motion, um. If. Well, I I don't even know if we're ready to be able to have a discussion like this tonight. Um. But if this is not time sensitive, um. And. And the board were to ask. If we could look at what it would look like if we allowed. Uh marijuana as an agricultural product in. Other rural residential zones. So not I I understand that row crops are allowed in. Um even uh urban and suburban and urban. I'm talking about rural residential zones, right? Um what that might look like and. But uh. But would staff be able to do something like that for next meeting if we if that's something we wanted to look at?
Yeah, I think that would be something we can put together, definitely.
In which case we can the I mean, we have to do some motion now, right? We can move to postpone. We can postpone it. Be certain we could table it, but. There still has to be some sort of motion to move forward.
I'd like to make a motion to. Recommend to city council. That we rezone the following parcels on Trap Road. Uh from rural residential to agricultural resource protection pursuant to chapter sixty. Article fif- uh seventeen amendments of the City of Auburn ordinances. PID zero five seven dash zero zero three PID. Zero five seven dash zero zero three dash zero zero one. PID zero five seven. PID zero five seven dash zero zero one.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second that motion.
We have a second. Is there any discussion of the motion?
Could you please reread that motion?
So I can summarize it. We have a motion to accept the proposal.
Thank you.
And that proposal does what?
That it's exactly what staff has written. So accept the proposal as written by staff.
So Mr. Martelli, what this does is this will then push this back to city council. City council will workshop this. And then if they choose to bring it to a meeting, they will have a first reading and then a second reading.
Right.
But this is our approval of this change. The motion is about our approval of this change.
Well, I I will say my discussion is that uh. I will probably reluctantly vote for this, however. Um. I I I. Because I don't want to slow this individual down, I think it's a situation that shouldn't have happened in the first place. Um but that again, I'm going to sound like a broken record. I think it's a a bigger issue that needs to be rectified much sooner than later, and I would like us to do that.
And I'm in agreement with Evan.
I'm gonna.
I I agree with Evan too, and the there does need to be a cleaner solution for this. In this particular uh instance. I I don't think it's going to set as much precedent, but the building being out of, I I think talking about. Uh treating marijuana as an agricultural crop in other zones would be a worth the worthy discussion of us having. And in in addition to this.
So my comment, I'm going to, I will probably vote no on this, but I support the project, but I think that um. The point about that we are just identifying who wins versus who doesn't, I think is convincing to me. I think we ought to. Actually solve the problem at its root rather than um. Put a Band-Aid on it for a single person. Any more comments? Discussion? Okay, hearing none, Megan will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Bergeron? Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Vinickin? Um, Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
No.
All right, thank you. Um. Item on the agenda. Um. Actually, before we conclude, item five. Um. I would like to uh. Initiate a brief discussion on whether we actually wanna um. Send something to city council about the issue in night item five.
I would very much be in favor of uh. It's it's not a site plan, um but sending something akin to uh findings of fact. In which uh the discussion is described, it was clearly not a straightforward discussion in which everyone agreed with everything. Um and also highlighting that uh. Uh several planning board members uh. Felt that there was a different solution that would that would be better and that it's our intent to look at that. I I would be very much in favor of letting the council know that. This was not a. An easy discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so staff, could you put that in the findings?
Yeah, so this would be something that we would include as part of the recommendation to city council, are you thinking, or a separate document?
I think uh that's part of the recommendation to city council.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, great, thanks. Um. Moving on to item six, we have uh another zoning map amendment slash public hearing. Um the proposed expansion of the form-based code zoning district T dash four point two traditional downtown neighborhood to replace the current zoning in a small portion of the urban residential district in the court slash Lake Street neighborhood. And the multifamily urban slash neighborhood business district in the area encompassing Lake Auburn Ave to Union Street and Lake Whitney, Lake Street to Whitney Street. As shown on the map pursuant to chapter sixty article seventeen amendments of the City of Auburn ordinances. Staff?
Um, this is another area that's proposed to be rezoned from multifamily urban to the T four point two form-based code. Um, a portion of the area this time that's proposed to be rezoned also includes an area that's currently zoned urban residential. The portion of the urban residential neighborhood that's included in this zone change is similar in terms of how the buildings are placed on the lots. Um to what what the buildings look like on lots in the multifamily urban district. So in general, um we think that the expansion will will better align to the current. Conditions in the neighborhood regarding the setbacks and and flexibility for uses. Um like the other districts that we've reviewed, most of the buildings um are nonconforming in this these areas. Um because they don't meet the twenty five foot front and rear setbacks and fifteen foot wall setback requirements. Um, the differences between the urban residential and the multifamily urban. Um is that the the urban residential district doesn't require um green space. Um it requires a hundred foot lot width as opposed to fifty feet in the multifamily urban. Um. And ten thousand square feet of lot area as opposed to the five thousand square feet in multifamily urban. Um, the 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 rear and and uh front setbacks, twenty five feet and the fifteen foot side setback requirements are the same. Um, so in the staff report, we broke down the differences between the districts as well as um goals and strategies in the comprehensive plan that support the zoning change. Um, most of these changes um pertain to maintaining and increase a uh the city's population by encouraging infill development. Um within the growth areas and and these neighborhoods are designated as growth areas in the current future land use plan. Um, another goal of the comprehensive plan is to um assure that the zoning and land use regulations allow. Uh private owners to improve properties in these areas. Um by making these own changes, it it will definitely um help with that. And um the change to form-based code uh regulates the look and placement of buildings over the use. Um so it it's more flexible with the setback requirements, so definitely supports that strategy in that way. Um and another land use policy that's in the the comprehensive plan um is for ordinances that consider the the current configuration of spaces. Within existing residential buildings um and allow those spaces to be used by. Um, you know, additional units or, you know, uh other uses that could fit into there as opposed to just being left vacant. Um as long as parking can be provided and it's it's beneficial to the neighborhood. Um, so like we've talked about before, the changes only apply to new construction or substantial improvements to buildings. Um and by changing the zoning, the city is making these properties more conforming. And providing additional flexibility for buildings on the lots in the event that the buildings are damaged. Beyond repair or the property owner would just like to reconstruct. Um, it's a third one that the planning board is reviewing as as part of a city council initiative to increase housing opportunities in the city and make properties more conforming. Um, so I just recommend that you. Um hear from the public and and make a recommendation to the city council on it.
Great, thank you. Any questions from for staff? Okay, hearing none. I think um one of the things I'd like to do since we had uh that rather lengthy. Public comment and we're likely to hear from uh people again is ask some of the questions that were asked with. Um in that letter, just so we can read the answers into the record. Um. So. The. There was a question related to what are the are there benefits to current homeowners and um in this zoning change? And if so, what sorts of benefits are there?
So um for current homeowners, obviously, the biggest benefit is um if. Your home does not meet the current setback requirements and it were da- to be damaged. Right now, you'd be required to move it back so that you have a twenty five foot front yard and a twenty five foot rear yard and then fifteen feet on the sides. So it substantially reduces the amount of area that you put a new building in. Um, it also allows for more flexibility in terms of uses. Um the multifamily urban, I think we put a a use table in the packets maybe, um but the multifamily urban district. Um is less flexible in terms of commercial type units and and these aren't. Commercial type units like a a sawmill or something like that. These are like retail stores and, you know, things that are more compatible with neighborhoods. Um, any of the larger uses, like I think, um I'm trying to think of one. I think it's a theater or something like that. Has to go before um the planning board for review in order to be approved, so. Um if someone were to set up a larger business next door to to one of these neighbors. Um it would have to go before the planning board and anyone within five hundred feet would be notified of that and could come to the the board and express their concerns.
Great, thank you. Um, another question was, um, has there been an analysis of how this would affect property values?
So um Karen in the assessing department uh reviewed this and unless there's substantial improvements to the properties, which is the same case that would happen now. Um, she doesn't expect there to be any changes to property values. Um, of course, if somebody. Tears down, um, you know, a a single family and puts up a five unit, then their property value is going to increase and they'll have to pay more taxes because of that, but. Um, other than those situations which occur now, she doesn't expect there to be any increase in.
Great, thank you. Um, has the city looked at um how other communities have? Uh done when they've made these changes to form-based code?
Yeah, um, we have, and of course, we already have um. These areas that are functioning pretty well. For example, um da- in the downtown area, that's that's all form-based code. Um, and, you know, we haven't had any concerns from neighbors about buildings that are going up next door or commercial uses that aren't compatible with the neighborhood or the review process and what those buildings look like. So um I think it's a good example that we have a a portion of the city that's already functioning well under the form-based code standards.
Great, thank you. Um. Why is I I mean, I think you've already covered part of this, but I might as well ask it. Why is nonconformance a problem?
Um, the the biggest problem comes in if their their home were to be damaged, so. Right now, they they probably don't mind that they have a nonconforming building, but. Auburn's unique in the fact that if their home is damaged, but the structural members of the home, so the frame, um flooring, all those items. If they're damaged by more than sixty five percent, they can't rebuild in their current footprint. Um, they they would have to move the building to meet the setback requirements of the ordinance, so. That's pretty huge. Um, you know, you don't really think about what happens if my house gets struck by lightning or something like that, but. If that were to happen, it would be really unfortunate for someone to lose a a large portion of their home if they can't put it back where it is now.
Yes, Mr. Martelli.
I used to live in this neighborhood. And my home burned to the ground in February twenty fourth of two thousand six. And when I went to uh find out about rebuilding. And when I went to uh find out about rebuilding. The home, I found out that I wasn't allowed to rebuild it. Because the property was one thousand square foot under what the uh requirement was at that time. Uh, the home was built in nineteen-ten on a piece of property that was five thousand square foot. And if I were to move it back and keep the requirements the way that the the city wanted at that time. Uh, the house would have been about twenty-foot deep and that would have been it. Um, there was no a ability of rebuilding the house as according to the city. So I had to, you know, let that property go. So we need to look at the size of the properties and see what we can do on that.
Thank you. Um, and one final question, I think, um. What recourse or what process is available to neighbors who are worried about a business going in next door?
Um, so the public hearing process um for special exceptions will come before. Um, the planning board, obviously, and anyone within five hundred feet of those businesses will be notified. Um, let me just pull up the use list real quick just to see the types of businesses that could go in um with staff approval. Uh, and of course, like with any business, if there's there's issues that arise. Um, it's certainly something that can be brought up to staff and and looked into. Um, if there are issues with a particular business in a neighborhood that's not. Functioning like it should be. Um, let me just pull up the use table. So the types of uses um that are permitted without planning board approval are um bed and breakfast. Uses that are less than four rooms. If if they have more than four rooms, it has to go before the planning board. Um, an elderly or child care facility has to go before the planning board. Home occupations are permitted, um but they they're permitted in all zoning districts and um there is a a hearing process for that. It's not a planning board public hearing, but it's something that goes before. Um, or the butters are notified and city staff reviews all the comments that we hear back from a butters on those. Um, as part of the application process. Um, community-based residential facilities are permitted, um boarding houses and lodging houses. Um, professional offices and medical dental clinics are allowed as special exceptions, so they'd have to go before the planning board for those. Um, general retail and age restricted restricted retail, so that would be like the marijuana um shops would have to. Go before planning board for review. Um, specialty shops are permitted. Um, and then restaurants and halls or clubs, artist studios. Um, churches are all special exceptions. Um, art galleries are permitted and an adaptive reuse of community or structures of community significance, which. Um, for example, we we talked about the Saint Louis Church wanting to convert that into like a cafe on the first floor and then keep some religious services. This um that's permitted as a special exception, so planning board review for that as well. So the uses that we're talking about, um, they're not the types of uses that aren't compatible with neighborhoods. And I think that's how um the form-based code functions as it's supposed to be, a a district that allows um. Residential uses and commercial uses that are compatible with with the neighborhoods.
Great, thank you very much. Um. Any other questions for staff before we go to public hearing or to public comment? And then I'll need a motion.
I make a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
Thank you.
Second that.
All those in favor? At this, um, that opens the public input section of this public hearing. At this time, if you would like to address the board, please raise your hand and you will be brought in. Um, to speak to the board. So there's one hand. Erica Megan, can you bring them in?
So for some reason, I can't see um any of the attendees or the hands raised. I don't know.
I can do those, Megan.
Thank you.
Heidi and Evan should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Heidi and Evan, welcome. Please state your name and address for the board.
Yeah, Evan Pierre, and we purchased a property on three fifty-eight Court Street. It was where the um five-unit building across from Heathcoast Burn a few years ago. And basically, like Steven said, we put our setbacks in. And we have all of our permits pulled for a new three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And by the time we get everything, we basically can only do like an eighteen-foot white house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the backside is all ledge, so we can't push it back without blasting and cutting all of our trees down. So this would help us out a lot.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other members of the public wish to address the board? You had one, then you didn't have one.
Yeah, Maureen O'Brien had raised her hand and I didn't click on it fast enough, but let's see if she has something to say.
Okay.
I spoke with Maureen last week, um and she's also spoken with her city council, I believe.
Yes, I did. Can you hear me?
Please, state your name and address for the board.
My name is Maureen O'Brien and I live at forty-two Winter Street. And I have quite a few concerns about this. Um, I think my biggest concern is the speed. That this might proceed. Um, from talking to Evan, it sounds like. Uh, people have a chance to give some feedback, but then it would go to the city council. Maybe as early as the end of the month or beginning of March. And I really don't think that gives people in this community in this neighborhood enough time to. Um, understand what some of these changes are. And how it's going to affect this neighborhood potentially. Um, and I really would like to see more community and input and involvement before it proceeds.
It's great, thank you. I guess that's it. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Please raise your hands. Seeing no further raised hands. Need a motion to close public input?
Make a motion to close public input.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
So discussion from the board.
Uh, before we discuss, can either Eric or Megan um. Some folks uh at the Zoom and I assume watching at home. Can you please explain the process and what opportunities the public will have to um. Both gain uh learn information about this topic and then have the ability to provide their input to the city council?
Yeah, so um the first step, well, I guess this is the second step. The city council is recommended that the planning board um review this. So this is the first, the second step where the planning board um reviews and makes a recommendation either in favor of the proposed zone change. Or not in favor of the proposed zone change. Either way, a recommendation goes to city council. Um, the city council will have a workshop, a first hearing and a second hearing. Usually at the second hearing, and these are three separate meetings, um usually at the second reading is when they'll hold the public hearing. Um, and for that public hearing, we will send out a butter notices again as well as um a legal notice. So they'll they'll see that when the meeting is, what time it is and and how they can participate. Um, and then, um, so that's basically the second public hearing process, and of course, they can. Write to their counselors in between at the workshop items or the the first reading.
Any discussion from the board? Everybody's leaving. Um. Yes, Mr. Sir.
Um, I I view this one similar to uh the discussion we had on the new Auburn neighborhood. Um, I'm not as familiar with this particular neighborhood, although I have family that lives there, but I did grow up in New Auburn. Um, it sounds like Mr. Martelli's. Uh, very familiar with this neighborhood and he's echoing the concerns I had about New Auburn, which were that the zone that was there. Was prohibitive um and actually detrimental to the character of the neighborhood because the neighborhood could not be. Uh, rebuilt if it needed to be in the same way.
Right.
You building most of the homes in the neighborhood. And uh when I look at the map, I just had my tablet over here and I was kind of checking out the aerial maps while we were talking. It's that it looks very much like the same thing. I measured a couple lots and it seems like it's the same issue here that um. Changing this zone actually helps those helps the folks in that in in that neighborhood maintain the actual character of their neighborhood if something catastrophic were to happen. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Are there thoughts or comments for, yeah, Mr. Bergeron?
I I agree uh with what Evan just said. Uh, the one uh hitch I had with it was some, there was a couple spots. The multifamily urban all. The vast majority would be non-conforming if it didn't make this change, but the urban residential. The the four, I think, four houses at the end of Highland Ave on the uh Western Prom side. Would all now be zoned to be non-conforming because the the T four point two has a fifteen-foot max setback and those houses are well. Over fifteen feet back off the street property. As well as fifteen Holly. Eleven Forest, fifteen Forest and Seven Lake Street are all. It's not, the 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 majority of those houses are, would all benefit and be become conforming, but there are. A couple of properties, especially the ones at the end of Highland Ave. That are uh well off of the street and would now be themselves non-conformer.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Yeah, I guess I hadn't looked necessarily at that part and Mr. Bergeron uh is correct. Is that on the, it's it's difficult to tell on the map you gave us, is that on the edge? Of the proposed change or is that sort of in the middle? Difficult with, given the scale on the smaller. Smaller map.
The one, the ones on Highland are towards the edge. Uh, there's like the one on Lake Street is right the second to last property before Lake Street meets Court. And that little V section that that houses uh well off the the street line. And there's one on Holly that's similar and a couple on Forest that are also uh similar.
I'm just pulling up the map to see if I can.
Does this zone change end at Highland and Western Prom? As far as moving towards the northwest? It kind of fills in the southwest, but not. Northwest of that.
Let me share this.
I guess the better question is, does staff have this on something that they can blow up so we can see?
Yeah.
This is on the website um for people to be able to zoom in on it, understand, you know. Some members of the public might not be able to access it. We did print off um. Larger zoom versions and actually mailed some out to some of butters so they could see exactly where their property lies on this.
So is the proposed area, the area shaded in blue or the area surrounded by the red line?
So it's this area in blue, um which is currently multifamily urban. And then the area in red is the urban residential neighborhoods that are proposed. So we just put them in different colors so you could see which which district was which.
But I guess my question really is, I mean, Mr. Bergeron kind of touched on this, so there's a few properties here, so. Um, Jocelyn Street, for example, at the at the far end of this is, all those properties are like a shaded. Blue, I guess. I don't know what color that is, but it doesn't show up that way on. On the map on the city, so this is a change, but I don't know what this is. Why are these properties shaded differently on this?
So, um, I apologize, this, the map, all the parcels that are shaded in gray, so you could see they're all down in here. These are all of the the people that were notified that were within five hundred feet of the zone change. Um, so if you're here, you were notified, but you're not in the actual area proposed to be changed. So um that's why those are highlighted and it's kind of blown out that way because this is what we use to notify everyone. There was like nine hundred properties that were notified of this change.
The, this is coming to us as a council-initiated uh zoning amendment, correct?
Yes.
So can you speak to the discussion that council had in including the urban residential areas?
The reason that um they're included and the reason, you know, the lines have to be drawn somewhere, but the reason that the lines are are kind of drawn like they are. Um, is because these these properties that are in these areas match uh more more closely with the properties that are in the multifamily urban. As you get further out here, um the homes are placed more centrally on the lots and meet their setback requirements, maybe not all of them, but. More so than what's in here. Um, so really, this area should be zoned if it's not form-based code with all this. It should be in a multifamily urban district because it matches more closely with that, um the lot, the lot dimensions at least. Um, so it's it's just, the lines had to be drawn somewhere and it made sense to to group these areas into it.
What what kind of protections could be afforded? Because I'm I'm seeing what Mr. Bergeron, I'm also over here, G I S map. Um, there are some houses on Highland, and if I remember, the like those houses look pretty big, so I'm going to guess. Given their locate, their location in the city and the size of the house on this map, that these are probably historic houses. Uh, because that tends to be a.
One of them is for certain, I can tell you that.
The historic neighborhood, what kind of, moving forward, what kind of uh safety measures could we afford them if they were to? Have some sort of catastrophic damage and they they wanted to rebuild the the historical nature of the home.
Yeah, we had talked about maybe creating like a historic overlay as part of the form-based code. Um, you know, the the form-based code would require them, they couldn't be more than fifteen feet off the road. Um, I think that's one of the requirements, so they'd have to, they'd have to be at least within fifteen feet of the road, so depending on. Um, where their building sits now and and if they want to put it back in the exact same place, um that's something that we would have to consider as part of this form-based code.
Yeah, because I I see what Mr. Bergeron was talking about. There's some. Uh, I don't have to speak to you on, I I've just got the uh G I S map and I. Given the footprint of those houses, like those have got to be some of those older, nice nicer houses, possibly the. And that neighborhood was was built by some pretty affluent folks, so there's going to be some nice houses right there.
Could you show area in the map that that we're talking about here? Because I I don't think Highland was part of this. Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
It's pretty much the red line itself.
Right, yeah, it's right on the side, okay.
And it it does look like on uh on Western Prom. We went one lot beyond Beacon to the north and maybe that could be dialed back a couple parcels to. Better match where that.
And maybe that could be dialed back a couple parcels to better match where that the transition kind of happens from the houses that are set back from the road to being more of an urban form.
Because I I understand the intent of the form base making a lot of the houses the similar setback from the street. But the in this case, it looks like half of the street, the the first houses from the Western Prom side are well set back. And then the houses on the Corsey side are right up against the road. So the it's already different looking.
It looks like we picked up two more house lots than would have been ideal to match the character of the neighborhood neighborhood on Western Prom. Those two to the top left on Western Prom that kind of stick out right by the the E S T in West. Yeah, those are really set back further from the road than the rest of the the group.
It looks like north of one lot, north of Highland too. So there's that one that's out of the zone, but then one more looks like it's actually a pretty good sized house or good sized piece of property anyway.
I know from personal experience Damage Avenue, for an example, was being built in the late eighteen hundreds in between eighteen eighty, eighteen ninety. And my home was built in nineteen ten along with the one next door. They were owned by one gentleman and he bought built the two of them in nineteen ten identical. And at that time, that'd be a hundred plus years ago. I'm sure that the the lot sizes didn't make any difference as compared to what it is today. So that may be the neighborhoods that you're looking at may be newer neighborhoods where they gave a consideration to more square footage for the lot size. So
I mean, it looks like they're kind of I mean, the map already sort of has a an odd feel to it, but one, I'm counting one, two, three, four, like four lots on one, two, three, four lots on Highland. From the intersection of Western Prom and Highland. If those are removed, it looks like that really removes the the most like the the most affected houses and those are also again, like I don't have my my street view on, but I'm going to guess those are historic houses that were probably built, you know, late nineteenth century.
The the one on the corner of Western and and Highland for sure is I'm I was one of the first houses I ever painted. It's definitely historical. So and it's also not the the those those look my the four in a row is really something that could be addressed as a couple other properties that are also more set back, but they're kind of spotted. But then also at the at the end of Forest, there's three houses at the end of Forest that are also pretty set. They're not, I don't I don't believe historical, but they're also would be out of compliance and that they would be, if they had to be rebuilt, it'd be more than fifteen feet off the road.
Where is Forest on here?
It's the up opposite side of Court. It's lower than we're looking right now. On the way to Ever Little from between Court and Ever Little's parking lot.
I know we're forced as I take Forest into work every day.
Oh, he'll see him.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. Yeah, they're all set back.
And those are a newer neighborhood than where I used to live.
Well, one of those houses on Forest that set back is a really large sort of Gothic Victorian. It's painted some some really cool colors. It looks neat. If you ever get a chance to drive up there. It's got some cool tin roof stuff going on and
So what are we going to do with this?
I like the idea of approving it. I think Mr. Bergeron brings a really important point. I wouldn't mind taking off some of the parcels from the recommendation with regard to Highland. But beyond that, I think Mr. Bergeron brings up an important point. And then as part of our recommendation, we should include verbiage that explains that there are some historical houses of concern and that there should be language drafted to address properties like that. So that way, if they are fully, if they are damaged beyond the sixty or sixty-five percent, they can be rebuilt with within the the historical nature of the original house. That's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, that that historical overlay that Megan brought up is something that I've been working on in the comp plan. I think, you know, I'm in the I'm in the group that's taking a look at all of our zoning. And that was one of the things that it became pretty apparent right away that the the historical properties are always the ones that seem to have the biggest problems when you're rezoning. And so there was a discussion last week that maybe we need to to identify what some of those properties were and make some special exemptions for them in our zoning ordinances. Doesn't exactly help out right at this point, but it is something that we've looked at and we're working on. So we will continue to do that.
It's kind of so much when we did this in the downtown area and I went over the the, I believe, Mr. Staples found the the properties going up High Street. There are similar situation where they're definitely historical buildings and set off the road enough that it would be impossible to be to code.
What if what if we looked at the it's we have the adaptive reuse of historic structures in each of these form based codes? Districts, we could look at adaptive reuse and reconstruction or something like that as an allowance of historic structures.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to piggyback off something we already have. If there's no more discussion, I'm going to make a motion. I make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to expand the form based code zoning district T or two traditional downtown neighborhood to replace the current zoning in a small portion of the urban residential district. In the Court Lake Street neighborhood and the multifamily urban neighborhood business district in the area encompassing Lake Auburn Ave to Union Street and Lake Street to Whitney Street. As shown as on the referenced map pursuant to chapter sixty, article seventeen amendments of the City of Auburn ordinances. Mr. Duval, you're you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Sorry about that. I don't know how that happened. Is there any debate? For this motion, we have a motion to accept the the recommendation. Hearing none, I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
Mr. Bergeron? Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Finnegan? Ms. LeBake?
Yeah.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Berman Duval?
Yes. All right. Thank you. That concludes that agenda item. I'd like to move on now to item number seven, which is workshop to discuss amendment amending section sixty dash three, four of the Auburn code Auburn code of ordinances. Buildings allow secondary dwelling units where two family homes are permitted. Staff, can you start us off, please?
Yeah, so this item, like you mentioned, is on the agenda just as a workshop to start the discussion. There there aren't any formal decisions that are required. We've talked about this provision a lot. It's one of those general provisions that applies to all residential zoning districts aside from the multifamily districts. And it doesn't allow more than one principal building on any lot in any residential zoning district. So what this means is, for example, rural residential district, it allows two families as long as there's at least one acre per unit. But the catch is the units have to be in the same building. If someone wanted to construct two single family homes on a two acre lot, for example, they would either have to split the lot if they have the frontage or put the units in the same building. And the frontage in in this instance would be two hundred and fifty feet per lot. So they need five hundred feet of frontage to be able to split the lots and put the two separate homes on on them. So the city council is going to start their discussions next month about this. And so the for example, the low density country residential zoning district, it's the only residential zoning district that doesn't permit two families. So this, the language that we've suggested suggested won't permit two families in any zoning districts that don't permit them currently. So the low density country would remain you know, single families only, and they'd still have to split their lot if they wanted to put a second dwelling next door. So where it's a workshop item, it's a a good time for the planning board to discuss and provide some feedback to consider before it's a formal public hearing item on the agenda.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Martelli.
Megan, I have a question. I I know that you're addressing two family homes, but do we have any three or four family buildings in this area?
So it would be for any zoning district. So it allows secondary dwelling units. So the language that we have is where two families are permitted. It could be expanded to say I'm thinking, let's see, I think the urban residential district, let me just check and see what that requires or allows.
While Megan's checking that, I don't know if you ever notice them around town, but it drives me nuts when I drive by and see them. Poland Road, there's a good example. There's one on West Shore Road where people really wanted to have an accessory kind of dwelling space above their garage. But we made them construct this really strange covered walkway to connect the two buildings so that they could meet the the letter of the ordinance and call it a single structure. There are a few around and it's really, it meets the letter of the ordinance, but I guess the goal here is not to to make people do that. To have the second unit.
Yeah, just to follow up, the urban residential doesn't allow any more than two families. So this would only be to allow a second unit up to two. In the multifamily urban districts, this provision doesn't apply anyways. So if someone wanted to put two four families on their lot and they had the required lot area, they could do that.
Okay, very good.
Megan, I have a a quick question. So and I I I think I already know the answer, but it's a question I think some people are going to have. So if if we were to move forward with something like this and someone were to build two houses on their lot, that doesn't mean that then they could go split their lot in two at some later date if they don't have the frontage to be able to do it.
That's correct. Yeah, they would need the frontage that's required in that zoning district to be able to split it. And a home that they construct would have to meet the setback requirement. So they couldn't draw a line down the center and have the home, you know, within two feet of the property line. And the other home, you know, twenty feet away from the property line, they both have to meet their setbacks as well.
Right. So I I just want to make sure that anyone watching understands that allowing this doesn't allow someone to make two lots who couldn't already make two lots now.
Right. That's correct.
Will there be any restrictions placed on how far away from a primary dwelling unit the secondary dwelling unit has to be? Or can it be any place on the on the lot?
I think we already have those requirements in the ordinance and the building code also has those requirements for fire separation purposes. I think ours, it's for accessory buildings, obviously, because it doesn't you can't have a secondary dwelling on these lots right now, but I think it's five feet. We'd want to probably look at that.
So I'll if if I build one of these, I can rent that space? Is that correct?
There wouldn't be anything that wouldn't let you rent it, I guess. There's not the ordinance that would prohibit that.
So to piggyback off that, the difference might be as compared to current. Currently, I might want to do have some rental income. So what I do is I build a garage with an apartment above it that's attached and I I rent that apartment out. What we're talking about would be saying, instead of it being part of an attached garage, I could actually have a a separate structure. And still be able to do all the things that I would have done with that second unit in my home.
Yeah. So in the instance with a garage, if it was attached, you wouldn't be able to put an apartment above it right now if the district didn't allow, or I apologize. If, yeah, if you weren't allowed to have two families in that district. If it's detached, you wouldn't be able to put an apartment above your garage because that would be considered a secondary, a second primary unit, I guess. A detached garage is considered an accessory unit, but once you add that apartment above, it becomes a primary structure. So
I guess what I'm saying is this doesn't fundamentally change how someone can use that secondary unit. Because someone can only have that secondary unit now if it's attached to their house. But by allowing it to be detached, we're not fundamentally changing what they're allowed to use that for as compared to if it was an attached unit.
Right. Yeah, it could be an accessory unit above a garage or, you know, an accessory unit in the backyard or something like that.
Has staff had any discussions about driveways and curbs yet?
Not yet. We have a plan review meeting where department heads review all of the items that are up for consideration on next Wednesday. So they'll, we'll talk about that then.
What about? So does my lot have to be a certain size in order, like, so if I build a second dwelling? Do I have to have a not a large enough lot to be able to? Like, so is there a an area description or restriction?
Yeah. So for example, rural residential requires that you have, I think it's an acre. Well, it's for the building. Hold on. Yeah, I apologize. The density cannot exceed one dwelling per acre. So in order to have two dwellings, you'd have to have two acres. But the catch is that you'd have to have in order to split it right now, you'd have to have that five hundred feet of frontage. And there's a lot of lots in the rural residential that have two acres but don't have five hundred feet of frontage. So that limits their ability to add a second unit.
Right. But that so that's a fundamental difference in being able to separate the structure or not. So if I have an acre lot, I could build an attached apartment building. An attached apartment building. Or an attached apartment, as Mr. Seer was suggesting. But I don't need. To have two acres to do that, I can just do do that in my one acre lot.
Well, it's per dwelling unit, so you'd be creating a dwelling unit, so you would need the two, the two acres for a dwelling unit.
With the, there's the the. If someone has enough acreage but not enough frontage, wouldn't that, wouldn't the curb cut kind of be an important part of? The second dwelling unit?
Yeah, and we have requirements in the ordinance for separation between curb cuts. So those will kind of dictate where those can go. And there may be something that the city council or planning board want to consider in terms of shared driveways if they're accessing one lot. I don't think you'd want two separate driveways coming out onto a road that serves the same lot. So maybe that's something that could be considered as part of this.
So, just to be clear, if I build a, an apartment on on top of my attached garage. That's a secondary dwelling unit right now?
It is, yeah. It, well, it's not a secondary building, but it's it's, it would be a second dwelling unit, so you'd have to have the two acres. If it was a detached garage, then you, it would be, can trigger this this provision.
Yeah, then I I can't do it if it's a detached garage.
Right.
Yeah, I think when you get ready to start talking about curb cuts, I. I'm okay with the dwelling units. I I would like to keep the curb cuts per lot the same as what they are now.
I I agree with Mr. Staples. It's sort of why I asked that question, I think. Instead of defining curb cuts for a dwelling unit, the curb cut per lot. Overall, I think, I'm I'm definitely willing to to look and see what staff has to bring forward to us. I I think it creates some changes, but it doesn't create a fundamental change to the character or. I guess, if 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 I'm allowed to have, if I've got a lot big enough to have two dwelling units. It's different to have two detached dwelling units as opposed to two attached dwelling units. But the the difference is so, is not so big that I'm unwilling to to look at it. So I I I'd really like to see what staff has to say about this. A more formalized proposal.
Agree. I wonder, just in terms of the map. If we could get a, okay here, not okay here, kind of map, just like a two-colored map. Cause I like all the color on the one that you. Gave us, but I don't really understand what it means.
Yeah, I'm not a GIS whiz, but I drew black lines around the zoning districts that this would apply in. So I tried to outline those areas, but.
That, that's fine, but that.
I'll add some labels in for you, so you can see what what areas are, it would be allowed in and which areas it wouldn't be.
Anything else on this item? Staff, do you feel like you have enough to move forward with this?
Yeah, I think so.
Great. If there's nothing else on this item, we'll move to item number eight, which is a workshop. There are three parts to this, and it's the discussion of ordinance amendments. We, so, maybe we should take this one at a time with, starting with A. So staff?
Yeah, so, these are, so the city council requested all departments to go through. The ordinances that they deal with most frequently and provide changes. Not substantial changes like the form-based code and those sorts of things. But changes that could be relatively easy to adopt and that have come up. As part of project reviews and those sorts of things. So, we went through chapter sixty in its entirety. And pulled out, in your staff report, you'll notice the first list are reference corrections. So, for example, when we change a zoning district or we remove a zoning district. You have to go in and make sure that all the divisions that that references are also updated if a division is wiped out. So there's some instances where the division references are off by one number. Which which can make a big difference when you're trying to interpret something. There's sections where it it references parking standards, when it should reference something else. Home occupation or something like that. So as you go down through the list, it it explains what each of those references are. And there's fifty-five of them, I think. And the next section that you have are just spelling and grammar cor- corrections. So those are just changing spelling and grammar. I don't think there, I don't know what else to explain on that section. But like adding periods in and and fixing sentence structures and those sorts of things. So there's twenty-seven of those, I guess. And there's an explanation of each one and and they're cited as well. Some of them are just weird formatting, like if you look at the form-based code, I don't know how the tables got like this. But they all say S T O R V instead of story. And I thought maybe it was just a mistake on the paper version, but it's it's online like that for some reason. So I think maybe when it got transcribed, it somehow, something happened there. And of course, we can't just go in and change all of these. If it's any changes to chapter sixty, even, you know, changing one letter like that has to go before the planning board. And then lastly, there's just some changes that we talked about from different project reviews. So, the first one is for multifamily suburban. The the ordinance right now, and let me, it might make more sense to pull this up, so we can look at it. So, the ordinance right now, it's weird. It, for four families, so basically the definition for a multifamily is three or more dwellings. So a four-family, a three-family, those can all fall under the umbrella of multifamily. So it's a hundred feet in width and a hundred feet in depth for a four-family. Once you get into multifamily, again, which includes four and three families. All of a sudden, you have to have two hundred feet in depth. So, you can have a four-family at a hundred feet in depth, but if you have a five-family, all of a sudden you have to have two hundred feet in depth. So it's just one of those weird provisions that doesn't really make mu- much sense. So we we put that in there as something that the planning board might wanna consider changing. And it's also the same thing under multifamily urban. So it's, it 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 goes from a hundred to fifty feet in multifamily urban. So multifamily buildings, which a four-family and a three-family are multifamily buildings. They only need to have fifty feet of width. But if you have a four-family, all of a sudden you have to have a hundred feet of width. So, it's just one of those things that doesn't make much sense that the the planning board might wanna reconsider. So, those are the first two. And then, some items to follow, just kind of fix other items that this affects. So for example, if we were to remove three and four families, then we'd wanna get rid of these columns here. Just to follow through with that. And Division ten, which is downtown enterprise. With the rezoning to form-based code, we don't have a downtown enterprise district anymore. So we recommended removing that zoning district from from the ordinance. And then replacing, replacing it as reserved. So that whatever references aren't messed up as part of that. Cause if we all of a sudden move neighborhood business up to number ten, then we'd have the same issue that we're dealing with right now. Under form-based code, this has only come up once. But there's a form-based code district that's only a few parcels that are along the river, but they're in conservation open space. And we don't have anything in the form-based code. It lists all the neighborhoods and everything, but it doesn't list conservation open space. So, we just recommended something really simple that we could put in there. That just basically says, this district is in intended to preserve the land. You know, we had some language that we suggested just putting in there, just so that it has at least a purpose statement. And it's not kind of just left out of the ordinance entirely. And then, let's see, FEMA guidelines. This section, it requires, it just says the lowest floor should be elevated to the base flood elevation. And FEMA actually requires that the first floor of buildings that are in flood zones. That have an elevation attached to them, they have to actually be elevated to one foot above the baseline elevation. So it's just one of those clarification items. This next one, sixty-nine ninety-two is under shoreline zone. And so, if for some reason someone has a lot that's less than a hundred and twenty feet in depth. We can consider it to be. We consider the setback requirement, so the hundred feet is actually fifty percent of that requirement. So, we run into this issue a lot where someone may have like a hundred and thirty-foot lot. And I know the number has to be established somewhere. But someone may have a a larger lot and they can't take advantage of this fifty percent provision. So one recommendation that that we had would be to up it to a hundred and fifty feet, as opposed to a hundred and twenty feet. Because that would capture a lot more of those projects that we encounter. It would be something that we would have to notify the state, because it is a change to the shoreline zoning ordinance. So we'd have to run it by them before making any formal changes, but it's just something that we thought. The planning board might wanna consider. Just an administrative item, we don't need twenty copies of plans. The ordinance requires everyone to submit twenty copies of everything. And this includes the large, you know, twenty-four by forty-eight plan sets. It includes all their cover letters, stormwater reports, all that stuff. And I recycle a lot of paper that's that department heads and planning board don't need. So, I thought we could reduce it to fifteen copies. Nine planning board members and then three staff members. And then, a couple extra copies for the fire department or the code enforcement, whoever would like to look at them. And that way, at least it saves five copies from being. Recycled. And I would like to add something in there about eleven by seventeen copies. Just because we don't need fifteen sets of large plans. For, I know some planning board members like to to look at the larger plans, but I don't think we need that fifteen of them. The ordinance still references computer-aided drafting discs. So we just recommend that that just says electronic copy. And MyLars aren't required anymore, so we recommend removing the reference to MyLars. And. The recreation and open space standards, so this is the standard that came up as part of the North River Road proposal. And it requires that property owners that are creating subdivisions. Have to provide a certain amount of open space for that subdivision. And in the case of North River Road, they were creating those three apartment buildings, but they were three multifamily buildings. So it's not really the traditional subdivision where you would see open space area dedicated. And in that amount that the ordinance requires. So, our suggestion is to specify that it applies only to single-family residential subdivisions. To avoid those situations where the larger multifamily projects have to meet such a high threshold. For providing open space. And then the last one, the ordinance has different references to. Planning department, planning staff, you know, it's just named differently. So we just recommend changing it to the director of planning and permitting or their designee. So that it's consistent throughout the ordinance. So I apologize, long-winded, but those are the more, I wanted to go through the more substantive changes. Just so you you have an idea of where these came from. The council will be going through all of these, I believe at their next meeting, they're gonna start tackling them. And like I said, it's for the entire ordinance, this is just chapter sixty, but they've got an entire ordinance that they're gonna be going through.
Megan. So, am I understanding from what you're saying that really we're not, this is more like a heads-up? And we're waiting for a council-initiated zoning ordinance amendment process to be kicked in? Before we are really doing anything with it?
Yeah, once they say go ahead with these, then. We'll have to figure out how we wanna handle all the public hearings and everything. If we wanna put all all of these on one agenda or how we wanna handle that. But this, yeah, so it still has a process to go through.
And it it looks quite possible that we would have the public hearing on these for the March planning board meeting.
It feels like there are some of those we might wanna discuss more than others.
I think so, yeah.
So I guess, you know, if we're thinking about a March public hearing, we gotta think about how that's actually gonna happen. Like, I don't need to have a public hearing on each correction of the word store. But, we might wanna talk about. Changes to the shoreline setbacks.
I I think we can do a single public hearing, but it would be helpful to know which ones we should spend more time explaining. I think that's that last list that Megan Megan went over.
Yeah, I mean, the the copies aren't really something that you really need to have explained in the public hearing. But I think, like you said, form-based code and the recreational standards are something that you wanna put a little bit more.
Agreed, so does. This is for March, does the planning board wanna identify items that they feel like they wanna, they're gonna wanna talk about?
I think in general, when we, when we discuss these items, we we should break them up into groups of. Pick a number, I don't know, ten, fifteen, whatever, twenty, whatever it is. And say, we're gonna only talk about these things right now, and then we'll get to the next, you know, and and we'll. Talk about all the things that we need to talk about with those, and then go to the next one, just so that, you know, I don't bring up item number one. And the next person brings up item number sixty, and then we're back to item number three. It just seems disjointed to do that kind of a discussion, so.
The way I was thinking of doing this is sort of modeled off the way I saw Evan run through. Some discussions about the egg zone a while back, which was to basically, we have a list of things in front of us and just to tackle them in order. Rather than even a group where we say, well, I wanna talk about number eight, no, I wanna talk about number two, that's just crazy. I would say, okay, we're talking about number one now. And then we'll move on from number one to number two, et cetera. So I think that's a good recommendation.
I think. We could. Do everything under A as a single discussion item. Everything under B is a single discussion item. Ask staff to group things under item C that they think are tied to each other, like the multifamily. Like those three or four suggestions would become one one item. But then if there's like removing the downtown enterprise, that's not tied to any other thing. So maybe that would be an individual item, but asking staff to break out C. There's three suggestions that are part of multifamily, we'll discuss all those at once. I think that might be the
Yeah, thank you. I agree. It was clear that, to me, that A and B were like there's, it's some of the ones in C that we're going to want to discuss. And I think you're asking staff to group those is a great idea. Thank you. Any more comments on this? Hearing none, we will move on to item B in this workshop. Everybody's favorite topic curb cuts.
Yeah, so this one is one of those items that the planning board is oftentimes granting waivers for. The ordinance requires that for lots with one entrance and exit driveway, a thirty-two foot curb cut. When there's two or more driveways, the curb cuts can't be more than twenty feet in width. And the ordinance doesn't specify whether this provision applies to residential or commercial development, so it's applied to both. And we've talked a lot with the engineering department and, and the fire department usually supports waivers for wider curb cuts. Just for safety purposes and ease of turning around the, the fire apparatus. The engineering department believes that the ordinance is written kind of vague like this, I guess. So that staff will look at the driveway entrances for each project based on the, the individual sites. So this is another workshop item to talk about how we may be able to move forward with this. Does it make sense to add some language in there about directing the planning board to specifically look at and review this, or does the planning board want to continue to grant waivers for these and just leave it as is? Is it something that there should be some language in there talking about reviewing on a case-by-case basis? Those sorts of things. So this isn't, this hasn't been initiated by city council or anything like that. This is just one of those items that the planning board sees often and staff thought at some point will want to address it by either leaving it as is or adding some language in there about granting waivers and reviewing it more.
Thank you. Scott's comments from the board on this one?
All right, what's a, what's a road frontage for, for a house with one driveway right now?
It depends on what zoning district they're in. The road, I mean, it could be two hundred and fifty feet if they're in a rural zone. Or like fifty feet if they're in a multifamily zone.
All right, so we're in a rural area. We have one driveway right in the middle of that two hundred and fifty feet. And we have a house on the left-hand side sixty feet from that driveway. Now, owner wants to build a house on the other side of that driveway sixty feet away. Is that possible?
It depends, so it depends on the speed limit of the road that we're talking about. Because the ordinance does have, not under this provision, but under a separate provision, it requires certain separations between driveways based on the speed limit of the road. So there's a couple of things that we have to look into in those instances for safety purposes.
He's going to use one driveway, but two houses.
The one driveway, yeah, and it would probably be an existing curb cut, I would think.
Yes.
Yeah, this, I don't think this would affect, would affect that. Unless, yeah, they could have a thirty, under this provision, they could have a thirty-two foot driveway, technically. Although I think residential curb cuts are individual residential curb cuts are treated a little bit differently if you're just putting in a house as opposed to a, a development.
Right, right. Very good.
So Megan, I'm trying to recall, you're right, because this does come up a lot as a waiver issue. And I'm trying to recollect some specific cases and everything that's coming to mind was actually a pre-existing curb cut, but because now it's a site plan, special exception review, the curb cut that currently exists doesn't meet the the curb cut that would be required for the project. So we end up doing a waiver because, you know, like they've got a curb cut that this, this, this one, you know, it says it could only be this big. And we cut them some slack somewhere in the middle and say, okay, you don't have to reduce it to a certain amount. Right? And, and this is just anecdotally thinking, is that what, what staff sort of recalls is often the issue?
Yeah, I think so. You know, it, it's one of those things where does the planning board just want to continue to review and grant waivers? Or do we want to have some language in there that lays out a process for that? That's kind of why we, we thought it would be something we'd want to start the conversation about.
Did we do this for North River Road? Do we have a waiver for North River Road?
We did. I can't remember. I think they already had a couple of curb cuts in there. And based on the arrangement of their parking lot, they needed to have them. I think it was, they wanted them to be wider because we had support from the fire department on that.
We had to expand them, yes.
That's my recollection as well. What do people think? Is this worth taking up or should we just let it sit for a while? There's no hurry, right?
No. We can keep granting waivers.
I would ask people who have been on the board longer than I, how many waivers, how, how often does this come up?
I think in the time that I've been here, I think of two or three, I think.
Yep. About right.
Oh, it's going to come up like a half dozen times a year usually. I mean, for more than, more than two, it's maybe since you've been here, but I seem to remember these coming up almost every other where their site plan, I mean, I remember like Aroma Joe's, there was one, there was the, there was another one on Center Street that was an issue there, that same year, there was, I'm trying to think.
I think the only one we, I, I remember was this, the solar one off of Perkins Ridge. That was the only curb cut I think I've, I've looked into since I've been here, so. Again, short time, but.
The multifamily, the conversion of the nursing home to multifamily, we had to do, there was a
Yeah, that, that predated Riley though.
Really? I guess I thought longer than you have.
Did we have to do that for Coleman's?
Yes, I think we had to do a curb cut for Coleman's.
Yeah, and they also had landscaping to park up against the road as part of that, too.
It comes two to six times a year?
Yeah.
It's just one of those things, does it make sense to just keep doing what we're doing? Or does it make more sense to lay out a process based on the windows that we've granted? The nature of those requests.
I think move it the way it is.
So we have one sport for, let's not deal with it now. Do I read it right and do I hear it right that engineering thinks it's fine?
Engineering says that they, it should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So basically, yeah, it's, it's fine as it is because if somebody wants a waiver, then they'll ask for a waiver.
Of course, engineering doesn't deal with the paperwork or have any deal with it. So it's not really for that, right?
And you have to make, you know, a formal vote on it and it's just, it becomes a process for and there's no real, yes, we can grant it in these instances and no, we can't in these instances. So there's no real process laid out for how we make those decisions.
Yep.
I think that, and I hate to ask staff to do any kind of work that need actual action, but honestly, I don't know if I can tell you which direction I want to go in without. I should remember all these things, but really being reminded like, okay, what were the projects where this waiver was? Which projects was a waiver required for or asked for? And what were the circumstances under which that we were asked for? Is there like a really common width that comes up all the time for a waiver or is it always different? Because if it's always different, you know, there's no point trying to come up with a singular standard because folks are going to, but it come up if they're, whatever fits them best, but.
And we usually
Yeah, so this is Stacy, all I'm going to say is I feel like we just had the same conversation when we had talked about that grow, about granting a waiver and discrepancies and, and I'm, obviously you guys know I'm new to this. And I've been hearing what you say about, you know, when waivers are granted and when they're not from a consistency standpoint. I'm just hearing, I'm hearing some similar themes, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
That's a good point.
Thank you. That is a good point. We usually do this as a condition, is that right? That's, that's my recollection, is that we don't actually create a formal waiver. We say it's a condition of
At least for the ones that I remember, I required them to submit a waiver request to the planning board.
You have.
Yeah, just because it's an ordinance provision that doesn't doesn't allow for us to wave in on our end.
So I think I guess I'd like to hear from the board. If we want to bring this forward, Ms. LeBanc makes a very, very good point. We could actually look at this as Mr. Seer suggests and get an idea if we're always talking about the same thing or if it really is different every time. Basically, look, get a, get a little data to see if we can make a rule or change the rule.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing some, some past projects. I mean, I haven't seen anything really come up since I've been on the board where this has been an issue. So I, I guess I'm not really sure exactly what types of things we usually see here. But just looking at the language here, it seems like a pretty wide curb cut is allowed. So I'd like to see, you know, what some of the reasons would be to have one wider than that.
I can think of four projects that we have worked on. And one was that auto body shop, we had to make changes on those driveways. Another one was Grace Lawn, we had to change that one. North River Road and the Turner Street project there, the housing that we had to change it driveway sizes.
Thank you, because I'm going to go through all of those property files and pull those out. So it saves me from having to go through planning board agendas.
Thank you. Any more thoughts on this before we move on? All right, so item number nine on our agenda is a review and discussion of planning board policies and procedures, Robert's Rules of Order. We, thanks to Mr. Seer who produced this, the foundations of this document, which I did a little light editing on, but I think the goal of, of this is to give a little bit of foundational knowledge to board members and then also a cheat sheet as to which types of motions can be made and when. So the question would be, are there any questions on, the question to the board would be, does anybody have questions or comments or edits to make on something like this? And/or is this useful at all? And/or do we want to adopt it?
This has been a agenda item, it seems now for a few months. And this, this document is the best thing I've seen so far. I, I think it's pretty elegant and well-worded. I like it.
I, I agree, this is a very useful setup of the, of the parameters. But as whatever calls, we were wondering when, when something could become litigious and I didn't know, maybe get those to a lawyer.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Bergeron. I think whatever we end up deciding, we should just make sure the municipal lawyer has a look at it and make sure we're not getting ourselves in trouble. But I like the idea of taking Robert's rules, which is because we all, when I was looking through it, we only needed like, you know, like maybe two percent of, of what's in there.
Well, and we frankly not used it very much tonight. We use it essentially when making motions and voting. That's a that's a fine thing for me.
I do want to say though, I do, I, I did find this really informative as someone who was not that familiar with the, the, all the processes. So this is, I think this is a really useful guideline setup.
Great, thank you. Mr. Martelli?
One thing I'd like to look at is the members of board voting and, and not voting. In other words, conflict interest and, and other things like that. How do we, if you're going to adopt the Robert's rules, how do we go about that? So.
So I believe we already have a process for that in our policies and procedures.
All right, so that would be in addition to this then.
Yeah, this would not replace our policies and procedures. This would sort of just get inserted into the spot set that says the board plan, the board follows Paul, Robert's rules. Instead of that, say the board follows or uses these.
Very good.
Much questions, thoughts? We're working with a suggestion that this be shown to council before we adopt it and not city council, I mean, like lawyer counsel.
I agree with that.
All right, well, hearing nothing more. People ready to move to the next agenda item? Okay, the next agenda item is public comment. There are no members of the public present. So I would ask for consent to move to the next agenda item. Seeing, seeing no disagreement. We'll move to the elections. So first we'll elect the chair for the next year. Are there any nominations for chair?
Feel like I'm in class and I just Feel like I'm um in class and I just asked. My student question.
It's, I, I mean, self nominations are acceptable as well. As the chair, I'm waiting to hear from the board before I make any. So I'm hearing nothing. I will offer to serve as chair for another year.
I'll second that.
So we ought to make it official and vote?
Yes.
Megan?
Back to my list. Um, Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Seer? Mr. Finnegan? Miss LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And I don't think I asked Chairman Duval, but maybe I do. Don't really know.
Yeah, that's fine. Just remember you all asked for this. So the next, we also have to elect a vice chair and for this one, I will also seek uh nominations or self nominations.
Cricket, cricket.
You know what, I will, I uh. I am gonna nominate uh Stacy LeBlanc, I think. No, you don't want it at all.
I, I can't. Honestly, my work is so crazy. I can't. I'm like, I started to work at like six AM this morning. It's been a long day.
This is a low stakes position, folks.
How about uh, how about Mr. Bergeron? Would you be interested in?
As currently an associate member, I don't know. Although I've been acting for, I think, all of the time I've been on.
Been an associate member yet, I don't think.
I don't, I don't, again, but the, speaking of the fact that this document's the most helpful thing, I know, I don't know that uh, if Mr. DeVal were not to be there. That I would be able to. Flawlessly run a meeting.
I've yet to flawlessly run a meeting, so.
Is it would, do I, would, do I have to be a member of the board to be a? Coach, assistant chair? Is an associate member allowed to do that?
That's a good question. I don't recall whether it's as a regular member or not. What happens is if there were, well, first of all, they would. Never be quorum. I mean, I guess an associate member would always have to act as a voting member. If the chair wasn't there, but further, there's nothing that says who the person chairing the meeting has to be a voting member of the meeting during the meeting. Actually, you know what? I've got the ordinance written for me.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Let me.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't uh say no, but I'd also, it was something I was looking to, to. Seek out maybe af- after we met about how I would move to becoming a permanent member as opposed to just an associate member.
Okay.
So that's something I was looking towards anyway, but.
Oh, it does not specify whether it's a regular or associate member.
So it's up to you, Ryan. You, you, you can accept or, or not. Up to you.
I guess I would accept, but I would warn, I would hope that Mr. DeVal is here all this next year.
Well, we'll train you. I don't have any plans yet, but.
Dun, da-dun, dun, dun.
Hearing none, I think um, we need to vote.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip Mr. Bergeron and start with Mr. Seer.
Yes.
Mr. Finnegan? Miss LeBlanc? Mr. Martelli?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. That's great. Thank you. Um. Mr. Bergeron will talk offline and I'll. Talk you through what I do and prep for each meeting and then you'll hopefully never hear from me again. Except during. Alright, uh, item eleven on the agenda is planning board items for discussion. We have one item listed down here, which is a comprehensive plan update and we have at least one unlisted item. We'll start with the comp plan.
Megan, do you wanna do that or do you want me to? Either way is fine.
Doesn't matter. You wanna go for it?
Sure, just fill in the blanks before I mess it up. So we had three meetings uh last week for the comp plan. Tuesday night was uh the recreation and um equity subgroup. So we discussed some of the, we started going through the actual items of the comp plan and offering amendments and additions where applicable. Uh, we were supposed to have um. Mark Goslin to come talk about the uh, the recreation tourism department. Uh, he was unable to make it, so he'll be there next week. Uh, we have another meeting, uh, another group of meetings next week. For these subgroups. So Wednesday, we had a meeting for the zoning group. And during that meeting, we, we attempted to finish talking about residential zoning. Um, we got pretty far, but we had a little bit left over, so we're gonna be meeting again tomorrow night to the, to hopefully wrap that up. Um, and to begin, are we talking general business as well tomorrow night? Possibly.
Yeah, we've got a, a map that we're working. Tomorrow night that shows all the proposed districts and their configuration.
So yeah, lot, lot to go over there. Um, and then Thursday morning, we had a meeting uh to talk about the, the turnpike. And uh corridors. We, we talked a lot about Washington Street corridor as well. And I would say for the most part, we focused on the corridors uh and uh councillor Walker was there as well to discuss. Um, the New Auburn area and its responsiveness to. You know, having a new turnpike exit and some of the zoning that would be required. Um, so basically if, if we add a, a turnpike exit in a New Auburn. Um, we're gonna need to add a lot of housing to justify having that extra exit. So. Uh, the discussion was uh with councillor Walker, whether or not he thought that New Auburn was uh amenable to, to a bunch more housing. So uh, I think he was going to have somebody from that group talk at a New Auburn. Was it the New Auburn Watch? I think it was the New Auburn Watch group, so.
New Auburn Association.
Was it that one too? Okay, the U N A. So um, yeah, so that was the, that was the update. Uh, again, we have meetings uh for all three of those groups next week as well. And um, two weeks later, we'll be meeting with the big group um to discuss. The, the, the goal of having all these smaller meetings was so that each. Would be able to present some findings at a, at a bigger meeting, so we'd have more of a discussion amongst the whole group to this, uh, to decide. You know, where are we gonna move forward on, on different uh items, so. What I miss?
That was perfect. I think you covered it all.
Great, thank you. Um.
Well, I have a, I have an item I'd like to bring up, uh, if possible. So tonight, we looked at two um. Zoning uh, amendments to the zoning, um. One was a, actually, they were both maps, I guess. Um, but any amendment to the zoning orders or zoning map uh has to begin in one of three ways. So there's a, a, basically a citizen's position that requires twenty-five. Uh, registered voters of the city. It can be initiated by the planning board or as written in the. Ordinance upon request by the city council. And I had asked staff, uh, and I didn't bring it up during the, the hearings because I. The, 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 um. The gentleman out on Trap Road who worked with city council staff to bring that forward was acting on good faith and I didn't, I didn't want to sort of um. Take that away, but uh, I had a question as to whether or not it was a city council initiated or a citizen petition initiated. And essentially, the response was that um, that city council decided to send this to us in a workshop, which is. Absolutely fine, right? Like they can make decisions in a workshop. But it seems as of late, we um. We, we used to in our packets have that like really clear, right? So when there was something, if it was initiated from the city council, it would just be like very clear. This is a city. Council initiated zoning change to do the following. And I guess uh, my concern is what constitutes, again, as I'm reading it, request by the city council. Um, and whether or not we want to codify that into a specific set of expectations. Personally, my expectation would be that if it's a request of the city council. That requires action by the city council, which would require a vote. As opposed to, for instance, a discussion at workshop where. The presiding officer says, is everyone okay with this going to the planning board for their thoughts? And then it comes to us as a, a zoning amendment change. I wonder if that really meets the. The intent of the uh, the ordinance, so. I'm bringing it up as an item for discussion. Um, whether or not anyone else, A, is, would, would be concerned about a process like that. And if they are um. What? What kind of things we would want to do to make it clear what our expectations are, or even if we have common expectations, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Seer. Um, anyone from the board have thoughts on that?
Well, it kinda goes towards um. The comment we received from the public earlier tonight saying that there wasn't, in her opinion, enough uh. Opportunities for public input and, and enough time there. If, if the city council were to. Have to vote on something like this, then that would in. In effect, that would add an extra meeting, right? Because they'd have to bring it up in a workshop and then they'd have to bring it up in a meeting after that to vote on it. So it gives them an extra meeting for the, for the process. I think that's an okay idea. I mean, in general, uh, the, the form-based coding uh would, would also fall under that umbrella, right? Because I don't think they ever voted on that either.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it's more, it's, it's, it's actually been, it's actually been a few as of late and um. My concern is that, so for instance, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use Trap Road as an example of only because. Situation there, right? Where uh, this individual uh worked within the ordinance and within the law of. That was present in two thousand eighteen. Uh, the ordinance changed in two thousand nineteen essentially, so land use law changed in two thousand nineteen. And they really felt like they were left in a pickle because they had built out. Their utilities in order to be able to expand and all of a sudden they ran into a situation where it looked like they might not be able to. Um, my worry is that if we don't have a, a transparent pol- uh, process, right? And if, if the ordinance says. Upon request of the city council, if it's not clear what constitutes request. It, you know, it could be possible that a neighbor down the road says, you know, I really don't like that and they're savvy enough to say, hey, I don't think the process was followed here. Is that gonna put this individual? Like if we use trap as an example, would that put him in, in a bigger pickle if all of a sudden, yeah, you, you move forward, build the buildings and then. Uh, you know, six or eight months from now, uh. It comes down that, well, the decision might have to be vacated, uh, because there was a process that wasn't followed. Ostensibly, we'd go through the process again. You probably have the same result that we have now, but it would be. It would, it would, it would, it just kinda requires, you'd have to go back and redo something that was already done, but if we were very clear. Begin with. You know, you, you avoid conflict, right? Avoid. Any sort of situation where it looks like we're not being transparent or leaving ourselves open to interpretation as to what. Something meant, what it request me, right?
Think your points taken, I think uh, been looking at the ordinance, you could certainly argue that it requires a kind of an affirmative vote. To initiate that at the council level and we can try to push for those going forward rather than taking direction in a workshop.
I think if there's a mechanism for the council to take a vote in workshop, that's okay. If you look at what they're allowed to take action on. It, it says things like, you know, if they're going to change an ordinance, that has to take, uh, that has to. But. Maybe sending, it maybe uh initiating a zone, uh, uh, an amendment. Doesn't constitute the level where it has to take place in a meeting. Maybe it does, I don't know, but I think there needs to be clarity around that. And some clear um. Clear consistency, so that way everyone always knows what step of the process is and if they were watching the workshop, they knew that like, okay. This is going to the planning board as a zoning amendment. An initiated, city council initiated zoning amendment process. Alright, I think that's important.
I agree. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Any other thoughts on it?
Do we have any more uh zoning changes coming up in the next couple of meetings?
Oh, no. I think.
Just the uh, I think the overall cleanup pieces that Megan's already talked to you about tonight.
I mean, I, I don't know how other members of the planning board feel. It, it doesn't bother me if it happens in a workshop. Uh, but that I, but I personally want a clear vote taken in which they, each member of the council. Uh, gets to say whether or not, yes, they do or do not want to send this to the planning board as an, as council initiated. Thing, and if they can do that in a workshop, that's fine. If they have to do it in a meeting, then that's what their rules are, but. Um, just sort of that very clear. Communicate, communication.
I agree that a clear articulation through some kind of vote is, would be great and it should be in staff reports. For this kind of thing.
Sorry, I know I went all heavy there.
I know, Doug, it's, it's all good. Well, so the last um miscellaneous item that I have is, is more a sort of throwing out a question for the board. That's not light either. So we last time had a discussion um. Or adopted some attendance rules. And um, those attendance rules suggested that if a member of the planning board uh was absent. Twenty-five percent of the time. In a given year, then there would be an executive session. So I guess there are some things that we didn't. Didn't discuss and whether or not. To have, hold that executive session, we actually wanted the missing person to be present. And we also didn't discuss when we wanted the um clock to start. So um, I, I would love to hear from the board what you all think about this. This is our process, so we have to. Come up with. A way to initiate it.
I feel like the clock starting thing should probably line up with when we made the decision for that to be the rule.
Okay. That's great. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's only fair. I think we might have a situation where the older rule could still be applied.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Bergeron. I think using the date of adoption as the start date makes sense. You know, it's, it's fair. Everyone knows that that was going on. I think as far as having someone in the executive session, I, I, I think the intent was to have that person there. I think also, we might need to have the discussion about what if someone doesn't show up for two consecutive meetings? Right? So like, let's say, let's say I had been absent and you guys were like, okay, you know, we have to have an executive session to discuss this, and I tell you now, I'm not coming to the meeting. Okay, well, if the idea was that I'm supposed to be there, kind of stops the board from doing their thing, we might wanna have a discussion about, okay, you know, if you can't make it to this executive session, that's fine, but at the subsequent meeting, whether you're there or not, like, it's happening. So that way, it doesn't get dragged out more than than two months.
Well, I would say if there's an absence that triggers an executive session, that it will happen the next planning board meeting, and if you miss it, you, that would be, that would be number four for a, for a 12-month period. Which is kind of a.
I mean, that sounds, there's merit to that too, I guess. Yeah.
But I think so, it's the absence, and then it's the next meeting where that executive session occurs. That allows us to put it on formally on the agenda as well.
I guess this, this is me wearing my teacher hat, you know, like, I gotta tell, look, I want, I'm gonna tell you this. Okay, it didn't, it didn't work out, so next time, right? Like, and I, not, not sort of given a free pass, but sort of like make, where the person has their, you know, I guess, we always err on the side of, of affording a student more opportunity than less. But I recognize that that's me personally, and I think Mr. Duval, you made a good point with regard to not doing that, so.
Well, I mean, it's also the kind of thing that the chair could reach out to the member and indicate that an executive session is going to happen so that that person knows. And then if they indicate at that time they can't make the meeting, that's fine, but if they pull the plug a week ahead of time or something, or day of.
Yeah, I think a person should have an opportunity to, they can always write something if there was really a reason. You know, they could give us something, even if they weren't able to be there in person.
Yeah. But I think it's important that they know that there will be an expectation of response to Mr. Seer's point.
Uh, you know what? Mr. Staples, in adding that, I think I'm fine with what Mr. Duval was saying with regard to letting an individual know the upcoming meeting, we're gonna be having an executive, the, the chair reaching out, we're gonna be having an executive meeting to discuss your attendance. If you're unable to attend an executive session, the expectation is that you provide a sort of a written explanation to explain the, the absence, and then that sounds good.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for discussing, for talking through that with me.
Well, how did, how did everyone else feel, I guess?
Oh, yeah, true. I just saw nodding heads, so.
Well, I'm hearing.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm hearing from, from Eric that there are more applicants than positions for the planning board coming up in the next meeting, so seems it seems like if we have people on the board that don't wanna be on the board, then we should let some of the other people on.
So to be, so what are you advocating for there? Can you?
Well, I think I'd advocate for us following any procedure that we have in our ordinance, whether it be a procedure before our last meeting or the procedure that we've just codified since in our last meeting. I, I feel as though that there's that we have a member that isn't following either one of those, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other thoughts or comments? Mr. Martelli, Mr. Finnegan?
I'm set. I only miss two meetings a year anyway.
Mr. Bergeron?
I guess in regards to there being more applications than there are positions, would if, if someone were to apply and be, would I still be a vice chair as an associate member?
We gotta move you up, that's all.
Yeah.
Why, why, what's the problem? I guess what's the process for that?
For promotion.
That's it. There's no, like, if someone else comes in and they're a full member and you haven't been made a full member yet, it doesn't matter.
So, Mr. Bergeron, the, the appointment committee has, is going to be meeting fairly soon for these, for these new positions. There was an email that was sent out yesterday from the city saying that the applications are gonna be due, I think, by the end of this week. So if you wanted to move from an associate member to a full member, I would encourage you to get your application in this week for that. It's, it's, it's the same application that you filled out previously. It's just on the, there's a, there's one question that asks whether or not you're a new member or you're a returning member, or if you wanna move from an associate to a full, you just click that option.
Right. I will have to get on that then.
I think, I think they're scheduled to meet on the 12th, if I remember right, so by Thursday would be ideal.
Alright. Thank you.
Alright, so now I'm gonna say thank you all for talking through that. Any more comments before we move to miscellaneous?
I just wanna let Riley know, is it Wanda that he can email to ask for that, or should he email Sue?
Sue is the one who will receive the applications. You can pull the application right off the boards and committees page on the city's website, though.
And, and, well, Riley, it's electronic. You don't have to type, you don't have to like do a paper or something.
Alright, so miscellaneous upcoming items for March.
Um, so you'll see those zoning amendments again that we were just talking about. And then we have a solar project that's proposed at 1054 North River Road. It's in the Ag Zone, so it's another one that'll be, you know, we'll be looking at the prime soils and those sorts of things, but was there another one that I'm forgetting, or is that it?
Yeah, there's, there's one other one. There was a fire at an apartment, a kind of a mixed-use building on Minded Avenue a year or so ago, 386 Minded Avenue. They're looking to replace the former commercial spaces with apartments as part of the rehab of the existing apartments.
Was that the karate studio?
Yes, it was.
Alright, very good.
Yep, they're adding five more. They had 17, they wanna go up to 22 units by replacing the commercial spaces.
Megan, where was that solar project?
It's 1054 North River Road, so.
It's up the road from the apartments we just approved. Right?
A little bit, yeah.
Yep, yep.
This area.
Great. Um, anything else? There's just one item left on our agenda.
Motion, Sharon.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.